Okay, five o'clock. Agenda review and disposition.
So I would ask, request that we move the principal's report to after agenda review and disposition. We have a number of folks here for specific reasons, so I think we can talk about it right away. And Bruce can talk about it, as well as we have some students that have asked to speak, and then move to public comment right after that.
Okay, so public comment up on the principal's report. Okay, great. And we'll have privilege of the floor and the latter part of the meeting as well, just in case we need it. Okay, principal's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real brief, we're coming off a great week. We had a wonderful homecoming. We haven't had one in three years, and the kids were marvelous. Pepper Alley was extremely well attended. Thank God for seeing this big win, though I have a problem on my hands there. And the following day, we had a dance, and it was all but three hundred kids in the gym. But I have to tell you, the many years I've been here, was one of the most successful Pepper Allies we've had. That was last week. Let me give you a brief synopsis of why we're here and who's the vultures moved, the issue I'm going to discuss upfront. In June, I was approached by some student about forming a club, and I met with the student and went over the details of how a club works. Basically, in the handbook, people will call for, they will say they would meet with the assistant principal, but if you recall in June, we did not have an assistant principal at that time, so that's why Mr. Parsons dealt with it, and is dealing with it now. So they filled me in on the specifics of the club. I had a short conversation with them and asked them if they would tell them that they needed an advisor, that had to be within the school. They proceeded next, come the opening of the school, they did have an advisor, and I had asked them to go out and research and let me know if it was another public high school that was going to have this club. At the time, the club was going to be called the...
What? Life? I don't remember. Students for Life.
Students for Life of America. That was the original proposition that they had proposed to me, and they did come back, and they let me know there were a couple of private schools that were forming this club. So what transpired next is I said, I made a decision to contact our lawyer, and I did, and Flava Lohman got right to work on it, and I will pass you out. It's very black and white, the decision that Flava had. And basically, in a nutshell, that clubs are absolutely legal, and it's supported the First Amendment and the equal, there's another equal status that we have. If you recall, we have a number of clubs, and basically, that letter that you're getting, the number of clubs that we support here at this high school that are non-curriculum related, okay? Those are called open forum. As long as we have clubs of that nature, this club is legal and needs to stay. So that was the decision that the attorney had given me, and based on that, I contacted the club advisor and the head student that was leading the cause for the club and told them they could form their club. They were a week behind, homecoming week, because we do have joint week at this high school, and that week, the kids are allowed from different clubs to, they set up down in the cafeteria foyer, and they're basically, they're looking for new members to join. So the OSPE club would be down there, the Strongly Club, all the clubs, but this club did not have a chance. And they had changed the title of their club, and I'm giving you a brochure to what they presented to me, and they changed that title to Bobcats for Life. And in it is their mission statement and their goals for the club. And I think it was on Wednesday, the 28th, they had their table down in the cafe foyer, and following that, I had a number of kids come to me and request to meet. And I sat with them and shared with the kids exactly what I did and how I did it. I shared with the same brochures that you people have, the pamphlet you have in front of you, and they put together a presentation that they would like to present to you tonight. So on behalf of...
I would just like to say and jump in. First of all, Bruce did deny the request initially, and then it was, we looked at it again, or Bruce looked at it again with the attorney. And just to bring your attention to the second page of the advisory, and I'm just going to read the last two paragraphs. You have several non-curriculum organizations or clubs that are not curriculum related, including the Crestwood Club, OSPE Club, Students for Diversity, Youth Leadership through Adventure. From reviewing the list of student clubs in the handbook, I've concluded that the high school has established a limited open forum, which is what Bruce was just talking about. The school board can, if they choose to do so, change the school back from a limited open forum, however, that would mean eliminating all non-curriculum related clubs, including some of the clubs listed in the handbook. So that's why it was initiated. The other piece that has happened in the meantime before we have some of the students speak is that, do you want to talk about the name of the...
The name.
So...
Well, that was not the name they presented me before. But I did, I did have an issue with using the Bobcats for the title of the club, and I did ask the student to come back and think about a different title for the club. The title, using the Bobcats, I just feel that it caused a lot of havoc and disruptions.
Did they come back for one?
Not yet, not yet.
So this is, this is all pretty new, but the lunch that it happened in was...
Was Wednesday.
Wednesday, Thursday, there was a significant amount of complaints, so Thursday, Friday, you're dealing with that.
Thursday, Friday, I dealt with the kids, and parents I had called, I answered all the emails that parents had issued to me. And the kid did organize a petition. They did, very respectfully, on, after homecoming, they had organized a We Are Green, and I don't want to steal their thunder, they will speak to you about that, and they did, but you know, they did put up posters. I asked them not to put up posters until we had this meeting with the school board, and they were very respectful with that. But they did, you know, they did have their We Are Green on Monday, and I had no disruptions at all. The kids were great, and, but I've met with them a number of times, so they have worked hard to present to you tonight what their comments and their view on this subject is. But I just want to be real clear, this is how we handled it, you know? So I kept the school from liability.
The other piece that I'm going to be recommending to you is, or I, we are going to put a pause on the club for right now, given the number of, whether the accusations or statements made that we have to investigate and have to bring back, probably to committee. My assumption is that there probably would be a request to appeal it, which comes to, as you know, at your level, if they disagree with what administration has done, you can go there, but at that point, the committee will be able to have additional information. At this point, it's really a lot of hearsay, and you don't have specific information about some of the statements, so you just need more time to look into it, so you have the information that you need to make in the best interest of the school.
I also, I want to tell what I did send, I collaborated with the teachers, with the teachers' union, I did send an email out to the staff and ask them to not put any personal in the curriculum, that this would take away from educational time. So I did issue a statement to the faculty on that.
And just lastly, before you hear from the students, the students that have addressed myself, or Mr. Parsons, or Mrs. Eccleston have been, on either side of the issue, have been completely appropriate, well-spoken, very calm and collected. I think most of what the complaints that we're hearing is really from some folks outside our organization on social media, so I think that you, that's, those are some of the complaints that, you know, we can't control that platform, obviously, but I would say that the students in this building have been very appropriate, very well-spoken, and have used the right channels to address their concerns.
Absolutely. Lucy, come on up here, we'll move.
Good evening, Hemi Baker Regional School Board. I'm Lucy Boishman, a junior here at PRHS, and with me I have Lindsay Miller, Isabella Rossner, Kaitlin Ashen Spirit, she's not here, she has a field notebook in here, and Molly Hazelton. Together, we have worked hard throughout the last week to seek justice for ourselves and the rest of those affected. On Wednesday, September 28th of 2022, we were shocked to see the new Bobcats for Life group sitting outside of our cafeteria. We have never been more uncomfortable in a school setting. The group of women I have with me today, and I talked to Mr. Bruce Parsons at 8:00 a.m. on Thursday, September 29th of 2022. Thursday, the 29th, many students came up to us and thanked us for what we have done, and stated how they would never have spoken up if we didn't do it first. On that very same day, the five of us spent almost two hours, missing two classes, in Principal Parsons' office, talking to him about how uncomfortable, saddened, and disgusted many members of the PRHS community are. I will now read the opening statement in our discussion. Mr. Parsons, this group included myself, Lucy Boishman, Lindsay Miller, Molly Hazelton, Isabella Rossner, and Kaitlin Ash are currently speaking to you as I read this. I would like to let you know how we are feeling regarding this new Bobcats for Life Club that has had its debut on Wednesday, September 28th of 2022. We are disappointed, disgusted, and saddened that this is allowed in PRHS. Before the 28th, we were proud members of the Bobcat community. Myself, the courageous woman next to me, and many other students in PRHS have decided that we no longer want to be a part of this Bobcat community, but we choose to be Bobcats. We choose to be Bobcats today, tomorrow, weeks, and months, and years from now. We choose to be Bobcats, and we choose to get justice for those impacted by this horrible and disturbing club that has entered the PRHS building. Women in this school and community, including parents, citizens, and administrators, are upset with how the school board, administration, and workers in this building have walled in this club. Not only is it very upsetting to people, it's offensive. According to the Plymouth Regional High School Handbook under "Starting a Club," it states, "If any group of students wishes to establish a club, they should contact the assistant principal and who will work with them on the necessary process." This means that Assistant Principal Eccleston or Cleary has worked with this group, and if that statement is not accurate, then the club is not valid. We, as a whole, the student body and teachers, are disappointed in the lack of respect that this school has for women. Teachers, people we are supposed to look up to, are responsible for creating this club, validating it, and helping it prosper. How are we, as students, supposed to be comfortable in a building with teachers that do not support us? We are here for education at a public high school in New Hampshire. We are here for education, to learn things that we need to go to college. I certainly do not need anti-abortion Christianity pushed upon me in order to succeed in high school, college, or life beyond this school. PRHS faculty members have told us all that we can be who we want to be. Not only am I uncomfortable as a student with Christianity being pushed upon me, but pro-life is against many religions. We deserve justice, and we deserve a comfortable environment to learn in. There is no need to bring politics into this building, and many students are frustrated. Our intentions are to end this club, and if that cannot happen, the name must be changed, as it has been. Bobcats are all of us, students and faculty. We, as Bobcats, are not okay with being represented by this. We have provided you with our names and reasoning as to why this is not okay. I am saddened that this even has to be a conversation that we have to have, and that it passed through as many people as it did. This here, in front of you, is a small portion of the many girls we have behind us. There will be a petition published, if it is not already published by when you were reading this, and it was published when you were going with signatures. I ask you, Mr. Parsons, how many signatures do we need to get justice? How many people are needed? Mr. Parsons, please give us justice. What I just read to you is the conversation started on Thursday, September 29th. We would like to thank Mr. Bruce Parsons for his willingness to explain everything to us, we deeply appreciate it. I would now like to speak about how this club has become a club. As I previously mentioned, a club must go through our assistant principal in order to start. Ms. Janet Eccleston and Mr. Randy Cleary did not have any communication or say in whether this club would be allowed or not. It was handled by Mr. Bruce Parsons and him only. If Mr. Bruce Parsons was not comfortable with giving Mrs. Eccleston this case, as she is new to the building, wouldn't that be the first sign that this club is not okay? We would like to understand how a single club is allowed to enter our public high school, preach Christianity, and be openly anti-abortion. We have and will continue to go to Principal Parsons with specific examples of how this group has crossed legal boundaries, examples like members of the club being harassed, religion being preached, and illegal teacher interactions. This one club has successfully divided our whole school. We will not stop until we get justice. Our education has been disturbed, between losing classroom time to advocate for our own bodily rights, and teachers crying to us and apologizing for what we are going through. Many students have reported that this predicament has resulted in a loss of classroom time due to the discussion of this club. Specific examples of this disruption will and have been reported to Principal Parsons. There was an all-faculty email with the main point of not speaking about this club during classroom time, sent by Mr. Bruce Parsons on Thursday afternoon. If an email is needed to be sent to all staff about this club, then it is very clearly disrupting our education. This situation that we have been placed in is affecting our quality of life. Between not being able to be comfortable in our school building and not being able to focus on our education, our lives have been put on the back burner. We put ourselves on the back burner to protect ourselves and many other students when we are supposed to be learning. Our education should come first, in all situations, and I believe that it's absolutely absurd that a single group is allowed to turn our whole school against each other and turn our education upside down. We, as students, hosted a greenout on Monday, October 3rd of 2022. This was posted on social media, we did not post it throughout the school building or anything, and then next. Well over 200 students showed up wearing green in support. Originating in Argentina, women in Latin America have been wearing green for abortion rights for nearly two decades. Their green wave reached America when Roe v. Wade was overturned, making green bandanas become a universal symbol for abortion rights. In December of 2020, Argentina's Senate voted to legalize abortion. We hope you vote to support and give justice to PRHS. Not only are many, many women supporting themselves and us, but we have the support of men in this building. I hate that I have to stand in front of a group of adults as a 15-year-old girl and beg for you to end this discriminatory group that was brought into our school. I, as a minor, am begging you, as adults, to take into consideration that our livelihood and education are being stowed away so that students can preach religion and anti-abortion policies in our halls. The examples used to how PRHS is allowing this club is that there are two other schools in New Hampshire that have a pro-life club. These two schools are Bishop Gerton and Bishop Brady, both of which are Catholic co-educational secondary schools. Today, I ask you how these are, these schools are valid examples of schools like PRHS that have pro-life clubs. Plymouth Regional High School is a public school in New Hampshire, two completely different schools. Yes, this group is protected by the First Amendment in the United States Constitution and the Federal Equal Access Act, but our principal, Bruce Parsons, can step in if our education is disturbed, and it has been. Walking into this room, I am nervous, not nervous to present my feelings, but nervous that you all will make the decision to deny more than half of PRHS rights for bodily autonomy and all of PRHS peaceful education. Women are uncomfortable walking into school, going to class in which teachers are a part of this club. Schools should be a safe place. I'm a junior, and since my freshman year, teachers have taught us that if we ever need anything, to go to them. How am I, as a young woman, supposed to be comfortable going to teachers who do not support me or my rights as a U.S. citizen? I am here to ask you to put an end to this group, to restore justice in our school, and to give us back the pride and tradition preached throughout this school. We have no pride, and we are not Bobcats. This club has created complete turmoil between students and students and teachers. We will not be Bobcats until this is resolved. We deserve a comfortable and safe learning environment. We would like you to know that we are here, not because of our views, but because we want a peaceful learning environment. We deserve to be able to have pride in ourselves and our school. We deserve justice. We stand here to ask you to appeal this group. It's all up to you. Thank you for your time and consideration. Lindsay Miller will now present the number of signatures we should currently have and share a few words.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lindsay Miller. I am a senior here at Plymouth Regional High School. I am the senior class webmaster, a three-sport varsity athlete, and even this year's homecoming queen. With my titles come the responsibility of keeping pride and tradition within my classes and school, and to be a role model for my schoolmates. Although I could be considered a role model and face of the senior class, I feel no pride and genuine disappointment in our school. I have put so much time and effort into my education in the last four years, and I would like to express the work I have put in into keeping a peaceful learning environment my senior year. I am here to speak on the behalf of the petition I led to shut down Bobcats for Life Club on Change.org. In the first hour, our petition had over 100 signatures. Now, over 624 students, siblings, mothers, fathers, families, citizens, and taxpayers are supporting us from all over the country to keep this dividing club and politics out of our public high school. The law states that if an extracurricular club materially and substantially interferes with the orderly conduct of educational activities within the school, the school officials have the duty of protecting the well-being of students and faculty. We feel that this club has disrupted our education and divided the student body. We are here for justice, we are here for change, we are here for the student who is a part of the Bobcats for Life group, who had to leave school early because they were being so heavily harassed by enraged and frustrated students. The same student has been relentlessly harassed on social media. Not only are we non-supporters having our education disturbed, but so are the members of the Bobcats for Life group. I am here for the student who did not attend school on Monday for fear of discrimination against what they believed in, as well as me personally. A role model of the school has been harassed on social media for my work. People have called our petition pathetic and unneeded. From harassment on school grounds to hours and hours of missed class time coordinating this movement, this group has disrupted our education. I am astonished that I have to stand here and educate the people who are supposed to educate me. Again, I would like to end by stating that we are in no affiliation with such rebuttals as protesting or violence, nor are we here to alter anyone's opinion on this controversial subject. The five women standing here are here for justice and our peaceful, undisruptive education. We, as Plymouth Regional High School students, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. So part of this, like I said, is very new, so we're looking into any of the issues that are stated in what the girls said tonight, as well as some other issues as well, but just so you are aware, we have not received any disciplinary referrals or anything from this at this point. It has been more of a hearsay piece, but we have told any students or any staff that have specific incidents, they need to report it to Mr. Parsons, so I did want to clarify that piece. At this point, I would, if you want to move to public comment, and I guess my big piece is recommending that this go to committee in two weeks to review again and to decide if there is enough information to decide if it's an educational disruption, with some of the information that we have. At this point, though, I want to repeat, this club is on hold due to some of the accusations being that said, and the Bobcats piece is being taken, they're being asked to change that name as well, so it is on hold until the November board meeting at least. Okay?
Great, all right, so we will start the public comment area. Just to remind everybody, it's not a dialogue, or we're not going to converse back and forth, we're just going to listen to what everybody has to say, and we'll take that into account down the road with how we deal with everything. And then I would lastly say that if you come up to the mic, where you just know, wherever you decide to come up to, we need your name and the town you own. And that's it. Yes?
And where is the public speaking area?
Right there. Right.
Just right here. My name is Tara Boishman, I live in Ashland, New Hampshire. That was my daughter, Lucy Boishman, who presented to you tonight. I want to first start by saying I'm a graduate of PRHS, and I moved to this community to have my kids attend school here because I was proud to be a Bobcat. I'm not today. When I walked in this room, and you, and please, no disrespect at all, but the defensive stance that immediately came from you tonight makes us feel that you know that this is wrong. My daughter has spent hours along with her amazing friends, and the fact that at 15 years old, they're coming to school to talk about these things, that's not why we're in education, my friends, that is not why we are in education. We are here for them, not political jargon when they come to school and are faced with this every day. It is disappointing, and I truly hope you are here while I am here, and that is for the children at this school. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
My name is Frank McCloud, Plymouth. I graduated from this building 46 years ago. My children graduated from this school, I served on this board for several years and consider Bruce Parsons a friend of mine. Bobcats for Life reminds me of peer educators. For those of you who do not remember that club or program, ask Flava, Peter, or Bruce, I'm sure they have the same long memories of it. I would like, like to think I am a Bobcat for Life. My hope is all students and alumni share my sense of pride in our school, in our community. Naming any club or program Bobcat, fill in the blank, X, Y, Z, whatever, should not be allowed. Doing so infers that all that, all Bobcats endorse the causes or mission of that club or program. As the leaders of our school, the primary goal of this board should be to make sure our students, faculty, staff, and administrators are safe and know they are a valued part of our community. I applaud students for trying to bring the school committee together with a club or program. However, pro-life versus pro-choice does not belong in public education. My wife, who taught in this SAU for over 30 years, would not have taken a position on this club or program while still teaching, as she would want all students to feel comfortable in taking a class or just talking to her. The school should take into account if a club or program would be disruptive to the school community. Issues this controversial and politically charged do not belong in the school. It should be, issues this sensitive should, should be facilitated by quality professional staff, not a student or an entity. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Yes, Mary Ann.
My name is Mary Ann Barnsley, and my family and I have lived in Plymouth for about 10 years now. My daughter is a junior now. We have been proud of Bobcats for about 10 years now, it's been difficult, it goes up later. I initially wanted to touch on the bobcat name. I think it's been said enough already. Clearly, bobcats for life don't represent most people in this community. I think if we were to have other divisive, such divisive clubs, such like bobcats for Democrats, bobcats for Republicans, or have suggested bobcats for Choice, I feel all of those would be wrong and don't represent us. Another concern I have is the pamphlets that folks have just gotten a copy of. If you look closely to those pamphlets, turn to the middle page, you'll see the name of the corporation that this pamphlet was supplied by has been whited out. Does that mean we now allow outside influences to drive and support our student clubs? If so, under what parameters? Clearly, by whiting out the name, this group is therefore pushing the line. After this group was sanctioned by the administration, I reached out to Bruce Parsons. There was a very helpful conversation. We were able to clear out misunderstandings on both sides. One of the things he shared with me was that if a group interferes with the students' education, then this group would not be allowed to move. As we have heard from the students, their education is being directly and negatively affected. Many students no longer feel comfortable taking classes from certain teachers. Some teachers even sign a poster in support of this new group, clearly sharing where they stand on this issue. Students have been cyberbullied for their belief, and classes have been disrupted over arguments over this new group. According to our handbook, one of our core beliefs, and I quote, "We believe students are the best in a healthy and safe environment, connecting with caring adults who are our respected role models." It is clear that most of our students don't feel safe and have been left feeling unsupported by faculty and staff. This is not a healthy environment.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else at this time have anything to share? Yes, Joe.
My name is Joe Evans, and I just want to be clear. I'm here today as a parent of a student that lives in Plymouth and by no means representing the hospital or my professional role as an physician. I just want to say that the group of students that came forward to create this club felt they needed an avenue for support amongst each other and amongst their peers. They're clearly a minority, and I would like to think that the role of a high school and the role of education is to help our children appreciate diversity. That's how our society flourishes. And that I think for our democracy of the future, young people, parents, teachers, need to learn to accept and appreciate the diversity and the differences of opinion that all of us have, whether it's on this topic or other topics. And that I would just like to say, I think this group of students, who clearly are the minority who created this club, because they felt they needed to have more peer support.
I'm just going to say something here too. My name is Melissa Furbish, mom of Ruby Furbish here. I'm a proud Christian. I'm a proud pro-lifer as well. And I'm not afraid to say it. I respect and appreciate your opinions. I respect the presentation that you gave. I do teach my daughter about Christ. I do teach my family to love people as well. And the things that I've taught Ruby growing up is to respect other people. Her and her friends wanted to be part of this group, not to woman anyone or hurt anyone. They wanted to be part of this group because they wanted to actually give women more resources to understand what the pro-life movement is. And if you look at some of the events that they were going to have, it was all in support of moms who maybe just didn't want to have the choice of abortion and wanted to think of a different avenue. It wasn't to silence or hurt anyone. I feel sad. I feel sad by how upset everyone is over it. You know, I know many members of this community. I know a lot of the people who are hurt by this. The only thing I can say is that I think there needs to be a mutual respect for differences of opinion. And this is one of those situations. And if it's okay for someone to have a difference, who has a difference of opinion, to be silenced or to be canceled as a group when they're trying to be just as passionate about something they believe in as you are about what you believe in, then none of us are safe from that. Do you understand? I mean, I just don't think that it's okay to silence anyone. And I know if the tables were turned and there was a pro-choice group on campus, we would not be like coming down on anyone. Or, you know, it's ultimately up to us as parents to teach our kids the values that we think, you know, are important. And then the kids make their choices. And I think that that's what Ruby and her friends did here. And on the flip side of things, that it's not been spoken here, but I think it is said, there was a tremendous amount of students who also signed up for the group, who wanted to be part of it, who didn't see it as something that disturbed their education and who felt like this was finally a way they could express their feelings about things. So I really do respect everything that you did and all the work you put into the presentation. I think that you sound like a very smart young lady. But I just ask for the same respect for those who have a difference of opinion.
Thanks, Melissa. Yes.
Hi, I'm Indy Rolster. I'm a senior here at the Harvard. I'm part of this amazing group of girls. I just wanted to say, at our original meeting with Mr. Parsons, I brought up how I, as one of the few Jews in the school, never really felt protected because I was taunted and told stuff that someone should never have to hear. And so when religion comes into this whole issue, I feel like if one religion can't feel like safe and protected in this school, then religion should just be completely left out of the school. And for my friends who were looking at this group, they saw it as a lot about religion. And I just know religion isn't allowed in the school. And even if it is, people don't seem to be protected. So I just think it should be left out.
Thanks, Melissa. Yes.
Hello, my name is Jonathan McCord. I graduated here in 2021. I am from Rundy. I do work for Pemme Baker TV. I do not represent anything that they're saying tonight. This is my own opinion. I dealt with issues very similar to this in my years of high school with one sophomore year where a student was wearing the Confederate flag. And again, my senior year with an administrator wearing a political statement on his face mask. I believe that politics does not belong in school at all. This needs to be a neutral zone where students are allowed to learn and teachers are there to teach them. This is not something that belongs in the school. It's nothing about whether or not I'm against it or not. It's just something that doesn't belong here because it's something that involves politics in a school. It's not for political choices.
Thanks, Jonathan. Oh, okay. Oh, hi Denise.
Hi.
Sorry, I didn't see you there.
My name is Denise McGowan. I'm from Plymouth. And I just, you know, it doesn't matter what side. It's co-curriculars to bring students together. We've had a really rough few years here. And we're just coming back, and we're feeling good and we're feeling stronger. And I just feel like a club needs to unify the students and not divide them. And this is what's going on right now. I think at the next level on a college campus, it's a little bit different. Kids are adults. Their frontal lobe is starting to finish developing. Or maybe at a, you know, a private school or Catholic school. I just, I don't think this is the venue. And these kids love and respect one another. And I think we need to build on that, not tear it apart.
Thanks, Denise.
Hi, I'm Michelle Edna. I am the advisor for Bobcats for Life. It was approached by Ruby. Originally, the name was going to be Students for Life. But there's a really big national group of Students for Life that's a lot more politically kind of motivated. After looking at their website, we didn't feel that that's what we wanted. I'm going to echo. So we decided we wanted to not be affiliated with a large Students for Life. And we came up, I suggested Bobcats for Life, so I'll own that. Did not think that it would affect the community or the school community, but it did. So I follow what Ruby's mom said, that, you know, the goal of the group, the intention of the group was always to be respectful and kind. And I think we hear a lot about some touchy subjects. And we wanted to offer just some positive ways that people could be supported if they were not in favor of abortion. Where could they get other resources? Or how can we help the community? The part that is whited out, we had, we said, that part of the page says, "We will extend our services too." And we had included the name of an organization before asking permission. So we contacted them. And so we didn't feel comfortable having that on there without getting permission from them to have their name. That's the only reason that was whited out. But we wanted to, we want to help local organizations, food cantries, gay and pregnancy centers, just other places that will support women who might be in under pain pregnancies. And that was kind of the goal for our group. And we wanted to extend that even a little bit more and just talk about healthy relationships within the group. We, as a group, find that there's not a lot out there that kind of defines what a healthy relationship is or just the sanctity and the preciousness of relationships, intimate relationships, that create life. So we wanted to kind of have, be able to have conversations about that. That's what really kind of this group wanted to be more about. It wasn't about limiting or opposing. It was just to offer those types of views. So, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Yes.
Hello, my name is Seth Powers. I'm from New Hampshire. And I just want to stand up and just say that I really encourage you to think about the ramifications of thinking that majority of people, if they dislike an idea and do feel uncomfortable about it, what would happen if in our society historically, they had been able, allowed to minimize the other group? And I really, I mean, you guys did a very good job with your presentation. But I think it's really, really important for people to be able to be in an environment where they can hear opposing views. If you can't hear opposing views, how can you, or opposing sides are having different groups that one group might offend another section of society? But this is an educational environment. I was a philosophy major. I mean, you learn to take debates and do all kinds of different things and be able to think through those issues. And I think this environment should be a place where people can have opposing views and mutually respect and be kind to one another and still be, you know, be a group. And as for the name Bobcats for Life, I mean, it sort of makes sense. I mean, if they're a group of people who are bobcats, who happen to be pro-life, I mean, that name would make sense to me. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Sam.
Hi, I'm Samantha Barnes. I live in Plymouth, and I'm a junior at PRHS. I think the point of the presentation that these girls gave was not to say that their opinion doesn't matter. It was say that the point of the group should not have been a school setting. I know it's been said a million times, being uncomfortable in your own school is not something you ever want to go through. Kids go through it all the time, and making it worse does not make you want to go. Learning is interrupted, you're thinking of new ways in class that you can figure out how to change what's going on, and you're not focusing. And it's just the teachers who are putting their opinions on things. Like, teachers are not supposed to show you their opinions. I've never had a problem being friends with someone who has a different political view than me until now because they're voicing it. I have never cared. We can have opposite sides and still be friends. And the fact that it's causing friendships to be ruined, classes to be divided, students and teachers are not talking, it's just a whole situation that's been taken out of control.
Thank you, Sam. Yes.
Hi, my name is Joe Dodge. I'm from Rundy, New Hampshire. I think an unfortunate part of all this is the ramifications if this club gets closed down permanently is that all those other clubs need to go as well. Back a few years ago, when the Students of Diversity Club was created, I'm sure it caused some issues, as a club would. It's a politically motivated club, as others are. And I personally know a young woman who was bullied her entire senior year and essentially had to hide from a group of people who were her friends because she just wanted to talk about something different. And when the Diversity Club asked teachers to put rainbow stickers somewhere in their rooms to represent that they were a safe place to go to, it essentially targeted all the teachers and professionals who didn't want to have a sticker in their room, whatever their reason for not having that sticker was. And an unfortunate part of that is that trickled down to our elementary schools as well. And so you've already got clubs in the group, in your school, that have a political background. They have a political agenda. But they also have the agenda of collaboration, finding people like you to get together and talk about things that are important to you as a group of people. So these clubs, I mean, you've already, the can of worms is open. All clubs are on the table at this point, or they're all off the table. And I think that, and I think Mr. Parsons made it very clear legally, that is what's going to happen one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Yes.
Sorry, I really, I don't want to elongate this anymore. But I just want to remind the board and the public in attendance that our purpose is for a peaceful education. I know the supporters that we have here are not here to change anyone's opinion. Personally, I do accept everyone's opinion. That's what I personally stand for. All PRHS students are required to take half a credit of wellness their freshman year. In wellness, you are required to learn about healthy relationships. You are required to learn about all opinions, which I will remind you, this is a public education. I just want to remind the board that we were not here to change anyone's opinion. We are here for a public education. That means publicity means everything, not just one opinion. And I just want to remind the board that our education has been disturbed. Not necessarily, we would be here for the same thing. Like, let's say there was a pro-gun club. We would be here for the same reason. Let's say there was a pro-choice club. You best believe I would be standing here saying the same thing, that our education, our public education, has been disturbed. Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay. Yes. Rob Diamond.
Rob Diamond, Plymouth. I'm here in both years here, and I support both groups. I think it's fantastic that these students took their common selves to come up to express their feelings. I think Lucy and everyone else, fantastic for expressing your feelings. I think we are in, as Ms. Muller you said, a public education. I think we have a perfect opportunity here in a public education as an educational piece. As Dr. Ebner said, hey, diversity. I do remember when the Diversity Club started, there was a lot of controversy. What did the educators and the administrators do? Turned that into, hey, you know what? Let's respect each other. There's no issues with it now. If it's disrupting classrooms, that's the that's the issue. But again, it goes to, hey, I respect your views, you respect my views. I'm in my club, you're in your club. That's pretty much what it is.
Thank you, Rob.
We are from Plymouth. I'm a junior here. I'd just like to say that we made this club not to be frightening. We had a table at lunch where a couple of us sat off to the side. We were not yelling at people to come over or anything. We did not mean to be confrontational or offended or offensive. We're just a group of people with like-minded views trying to get together. And I think it's important that us as a minority aren't shut down, because that sets the precedent that it's okay to silence the people who are speaking out what they care about.
Thank you. Yes, Karen?
I told myself I wasn't going to speak this afternoon, but...
Oh, sweet.
Karen McLeod, retired teacher, 31 years, very proud of this school district, proud of all the children here. However, as an educator and being actively involved in teaching, over the years, we all know as educators and staff how public education has changed in New Hampshire. And it is political. You know, teachers would get out of the politics if politics would stay out of education, but it doesn't. It's, I mean, we, we count on our funds from the government, from New, you know, from New Hampshire. And right now, in public education, the commissioner, our commissioner of education in New Hampshire, he, he has limited what we can say as educators in the classroom. It's awfully hard for us to have dialogue with our students publicly. And we, we are limited. And it supersedes administration. If a child goes home and talks about race, because I have dialogue about race, a child feels concerned about something, I have dialogue. In today's day, the way New Hampshire is working, I could...
Be sanctioned.
I could be what?
Sanctioned.
Sanctioned? Well, I, I would be called upon by the Board of Education, New Hampshire. Administration wouldn't even be dealing with it. It's straight from the Board of Education. I can't, you know, you want to have dialogue with these students. School is supposed to be a safe place for everyone. But you, I mean, I have been teaching fairness, celebrating diversity at the first grade level. I've done it forever. I've done it forever. But if I were teaching today, there are storybooks, there are things that I would have to stop doing because of the parameters that are set by our own government here in New Hampshire. So I think bringing politically charged clubs, it's tough. And I, I really feel, I understand, you know, your mention of a diversity club and how that was controversial and so forth, but the beauty of it all is, everybody is honored. You're all, you can celebrate, you and everyone is honored. I mean, here, the dialogue, I realize it's not supposed to be political, but it just plain is. And I would not, even if it wasn't a Bobcat for life group coming, and it was a Bobcat pro-life, no, pro-choice, coming to the school district, I would be like, whoa, whoa, we just, we can't do that. Kids have just come off the masking, the anti-masking issue, the vaxers, the non, you know, the anti-vaxers. We're back in school, let these kids just be them. And you can still have activities. I don't think, I think you probably need to look at your policy. I haven't seen the policy that you have on, on clubs. I saw like a little description, but it might be time, it's 2022, it might be time to really revisit policy and see, you know, if you can work to improve that. It's all pretty great. I looked through your handbook everywhere to see what, what pertains to something that would interfere with the education. This clearly interferes with the education of everyone. I'm all for being courteous. I'm all for being kind. I just feel that we have so many resources in our community that we all know we can go to. But anything that's so charged, I really feel, should be, maybe, maybe look into having a certified individual, not just students leading it, under the, you know, under the advisor. Advisors, I think, they need to be professionals. Maybe some kind of curriculum change, and offer some kind of polit, some kind of class where you can talk about everything, and you don't have to worry about, you know, whether I'm going to be in trouble because I spoke about this topic. You don't know what's going to come up in your classroom. There are so many inequitable issues that come up in the course of one day. And I'm telling you, I know of teachers, I know of faculty who just won't even touch on topics now, but, you know, 10 years ago, you didn't think twice of talking about with kids. But you can't have that, that dialogue. So I think you really need to take a good look at that. I applaud all, all of the kids' efforts. I was, I was moved to tears, really, listening to, to you Bobcats, all of you. Kudos to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate you coming out. All right. Uh, approval of September 6th, 22 minutes. Anyone see any of those minutes or?
I would move to approve the minutes from September 6th, as written, second by Peter. All those in favor? Oh, St. Gobin, okay, because we'll say she's not here. Okay, we don't have a student out tonight. We did a principal report, committee reports, teaching and learning.
Yes, it was a short committee meeting. We had Janet Ecclestone on the agenda, and she spoke about the Bobcat block and gave us an update on the new structure they're using to schedule their student with teachers for days during the week to help them with their, their studies. And she gave us a report that there's still, that there's a learning curve. I suspect that's getting better and better each day for scheduling the committee, or for the scheduling committee and students. They're still figuring out how to measure the progress of Bobcat block and the, she's in close contact with the teams of instructors who are running, running the program. Did I miss anything on that? All right, and that's essentially all we had. We had no non-public comments. Okay, nothing coming up, so nothing we needed to... So in next, in a couple of weeks, this, the club topic will move to the teaching and learning committee as co-curricular. So that would be something that to review. We also have some new course proposals as well for next year, so.
Okay. Could I ask, Janice, would you be able to do notes for that next, for the teaching and learning committee meeting? I suspect that might be, I might need to pay attention to...
She'll be there.
Yeah.
He's a fellow.
Thank you.
And I just don't do very good notes, and then I feel like I...
She can't do that. She can't do that.
All right, thank you.
Just real quick, I would probably do an approximate time for the school operations committee, just given that usually our committees are 15 minutes. I anticipate this might take a little bit longer.
Should we, can we switch up the time?
Uh, we can have operations go first, if, if that was for everybody, and then teaching and learning can go second, just if you think it exists. I'll do a 5 o'clock and then a 5:15 approximate for teaching and learning, okay?
Sounds good.
Is everybody okay with that?
Great, okay. And Peter, are you?
Me, yeah. Generally, we only had one issue really on the agenda, and it was to do a scoreboard in recognition of Tom Underwood's long and successful career as a baseball coach. We weren't sure on the cost of it. Kyle has received something from somebody, and I'm not sure exactly who it is, but, and the cost is $4,010. This price is valid until November 18th. I'm going to have to ask the administration a question. I'm not sure that, isn't there a procedure that is equal for public people, members of the school board, and teachers, and some sort of thing for recognition?
So from committee, it was brought forward that, yes, the committee is interested in bringing this to the full board. And the policy does say that a group of citizens and some of the board members will need to discuss maybe specifics about it.
Does that have to happen before it comes to the board's final approval?
Well, I think if we move this to move forward, I think we go back to committee to, to get the details, because that wasn't really figured out. We talked about the scoreboard, but there was no...
Yeah, there was no actual, the money was different than it is now.
Yeah.
Because the new school board came in, returning it and stopped.
Okay, so I guess, I don't know, I made a motion to send it back to committee with the information?
I just, I don't think you have to act on anything tonight. You can just, I'll just put it back on the agenda for a couple of weeks, and then you can get the details and decide who's going to be on that committee.
Thank you.
But I think just tonight, everybody was in favor of committee of moving it, moving it forward.
Okay, that was pretty much what we did. Janice, you'll make notes for my committee, please.
Want to make sure it's accurate.
Yeah, true.
All right, all right. So discussion items, weather day.
I'm just going to move up Dan's report real quick, you know, Mike, because he has the lead. So, end of your finance. Can you, I put those packets right in front of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for shifting the agenda from here. I'd like to start reviewing the year-end financial report. I think everyone has received. Also, I want to thank you for signing the required state report at your last meeting, after time of submission to the state prior receiving this report from me in person. We can start by opening the first page after the title page. You have a running three-year depiction of the general one. This is just about the general one. And about halfway down, fifty-two-thirds of the way, you see that the year-end fund equity position was about $2.2 million. This is including about a million for in board-approved enclosures and contracts that were underway. You also had taken a motion, supported a motion to retain the maximum amount of fund balance available, which I had reported that it would be about $306,000, per net unreserved fund balance of $524,882. Just as a refresher, this is, will be considered a revenue in the current year to reduce the tax rates that are set this fall over the seven number town of the Pembroke District. The number that you had committed to during the budget season was a little under $300,000 to sort of neutralize the effect of the new budget. But when we, when we last met on this subject, approximately June 7th, I had projected to you a number just below this. So with some other orders being canceled and some of various utility deals being closed at the time, as I say, in June, we had talked about a number in the neighborhood of about $750,000, and they had approved some expenditures, sort of unanticipated, especially like costs and a couple of other projects, small projects. So really, the general fund track, right where we discussed at the end of June, as I say, you know, reserve fund balance, the tax rate is fall $524,000, $580, and you still have $306,000, $7800 retained in your bank account. Any questions about that first page? Okay, I'll move on to the second page.
Just a quick question, if you mind. The, under the fund balance of the $524,000...
Yes.
What did we say was, is there a percentage as to, do we know the percentage that that would reduce taxes at this point, or is that too hard to gauge across the towns?
I, I could certainly provide that information to you on an estimated big town-by-town basis as your next meeting, but really, the, it varies by town.
Okay.
Because of the way the budget's portioned, and also the way there's varying assessed valuation to each town.
Right.
So it's a minus, it's a solid complex calculation.
Don't worry about it.
And if you get into the budget conversation, we'll be talking more about it.
If you have it, your fingertips, no, don't worry about it. All right, thanks.
Any other questions about that page? If not, we'll go to page two, which speaks to the revenues that contributed to last year's overall results. I would, I would, just to give you some, how do you see each of the accounts that we budgeted for and what actually was received, and what the difference is in the right hand, how, what I will, a couple of things I'll point to, just, and obviously, did questions. About three-quarters of the way down, you see district assessment. That's the amount that's built into the tax rates of the member town. And you see it was down $170,000. And that's really a function of a couple of things, including the biggest one being adequate education grants coming in from the state at $240,000 more than it was originally budgeted. And there are some other varying changes that contributed to the towns being, having $170,000 less than the tax rates last fall. You see a number, a number of other revenue changes, such as the miscellaneous revenue, $168,000. That was the return, primarily a return of health insurance premiums from the prior year, because of the nature of the health insurance plan. If they have surplus revenue, they return it to the members. In addition, you have some tuition that came in slightly higher than expected as well. So that's the revenue page. Any questions about that?
That was a good question.
That $168,000, you said to be returned to the members?
So, the, the, the health insurance organization that the district participates in is called Health Trust. Our Health Trust is a regulated RSA 5B organization. That's what's called municipal risk pool. Help, I'm not, I just want to make, really, be really clear, the board directors of Health Trust is made up of public employees. I happen to be on the board of directors of Health Trust, in order to ensure transparency. So, we said, Health Trust sets a capital adequacy level, capital adequacy reserve, to fund losses should they be greater than the premiums they're budgeting for. At the end of the Health Trust fiscal year, if they have more money in the bank than that capital adequacy reserve has been approved by the regulators and by the board of directors, they return the money that's in excess of that stated reserve level. So to be specific, at the end of the previous fiscal year, Health Trust wanted to have X number of dollars in their capital adequacy reserve, and they had approximately $32 million more than that. And that $32 million was returned to the members as in the employers. And when we took the money and for the employees, for example, to get 10% of their paid 10% of the premium, we split the return out with the employees in a pro-rat away which the premiums were paid. Does that make sense?
So was that $168,000?
The net district return.
Right. Was that returned to employees who paid into the system?
That is what was, so the district received an amount higher than that.
Yep.
Okay, a portion was returned to the employees, and a portion that they contributed towards their health insurance. And the portion that represented the district's contribution to the employees' health insurance was kept by the district as the revenue. That's what that's...
That's okay. So it's not, it was not an in-and-out item.
No, that was true revenue to the district.
Okay.
Good question for you. The $30,000 for co-curricular, the budgeted $30,000, why did we budget $30,000 for co-curricular and nothing came in? What was that?
So historic, you might have to separate them?
Yeah, those are the gate receipts, the FIA gate receipts and PEA gate receipts. and the gate receipts. Gate, gate receipts, we charge, the football game, we charge.
Got it, got it, okay.
So depending on the year, the superintendent will, how they can say, Bruce, can I take a look at your activity account? Okay, so we haven't, no, we're back in business now. So that's, that's in that account.
Thank you.
Thirty, thirty-five.
Any other questions about that? Okay, so we'll move on to page three, food service funding. As people are most likely aware, in the last two years, we've been operating under an extraordinary set of circumstances in terms of federal revenues to support food service programs. Those, those programs ended August 31st. So there's a couple of points I'd like to make. Number one, there's a program which is designed originally under typical circumstances to break even producer profit. Those profit, that profit stays within the food service program by statute. So the $82,000 will stay within the food service program, okay? The only point I want to make about that is now that we're back to what we'll call normal operations for a food service program, kids have applied and qualified for a benefit by three-year use. That coupled with the fact that, I think everyone's probably aware that food prices have gone through the roof, that the cost of labor and wages that have been paid in non-use environment in particular have had to change just to maintain operations. And although you did approve a small price increase this spring for the program from $2.80 to $3.00 for lunch, the program will operate at a loss this year. This district, of the seven districts that we operate food service program in this SAU, historically, two of them broke even, the two biggest schools, this high school and the elementary, the other five, all had to support or subsidize the food service program through an expense line of the general fund. That's not gonna be necessary this year, even though there's a proper loss because you've got this money in the bank. However, in the coming years, we're gonna have to evaluate the food service program a little more thoroughly in terms of pricing, scheduling, offerings, and whether or not we want to maintain, whether or not we want to shed things around, and how good a budget for that.
The other piece, if I may, dear, to add to that is, you know, we're responsible for all the equipment down there. So I, I pay particular attention to the, the life of some of the equipment down there. We own, uh, and I had a steamer breakdown. We put a brand-new oven in last year. And the convection oven is pretty much on its last leg. So, you know, I'll be making arrangements for that when I can put together the budget for next year to cover the cost of replacing those equipment warmers. Both our warmers went down there, so I borrowed one from it here for the time being until a new one comes in. But we are responsible for, you don't see that in the line item, but you will, with the upcoming budget.
So to be clear, to add on what was saying, but as well by regulation, the general fund has to outfit the kitchen, and the food service fund is only responsible for the, for the daily operations of the program. Any questions? Any questions about the food service page? Okay, thank you. So the last page in your document, due to the status of your two capital reserve funds, they're fairly minimal. Couple of dollars of interest each one of them. As you see, the year-end balance of your builder renovation fund, $1,720, that they keep from that later sport. Not a lot of excitement there. Some districts in the SAU consider putting more, articles on the mark to move fund balance that exists into a capital reserve fund for future expenses, something to consider if you're interested in that. If not, that's okay too.
$1,800, why would you do that?
Why would you?
I mean, is it so minimal? I mean, we've got a big balance set, why would they?
No, I, I guess, Peter, I'm talking about, so in a year when you did have a large fund balance, you may want to have the voters authorize you to put some of it into a capital reserve fund to utilize as a tool for future, no expenses. That's all I got.
Okay.
Are you leaving?
Thank you.
Sure. I would like, I could take one more moment. There's one other point, and that was last year. One other piece I need to brief you on is, in your transportation contract, there is language, it's a multi-year contract that's been in place for a number of years, and has two more years upon it. There's a caveat in that contract that the base price for diesel fuel is $3. And I'm sure you've all been to the gas station or near a gas station and have to see a big sign in the last year and a half or two years. And $3 is not the right price. So we've had conversations, we've been having conversations with Durham for the past three months about this issue. They, they've been paying, we, they needed a price adjustment. They needed us to deal with, they needed this to come to cable, if you will, and be acknowledged that they've been paying a much higher price since approximately, diesel crossed the $3 threshold in March of 2021. And so it's a number for about 18 months, they've been paying a number above. So we asked them to go back and bring us data on prices paid by dates, gallons used, bus routes, all this kind of stuff, which we reviewed with them in detail. And each of the districts in this SAU is absorbing. It's gonna have a line item, fuel surcharge on the invoices this year. So the base price contract is divided over 10 monthly installments for all of our districts, and you see that in your manifest every month. One of the mitigating factors that is gonna reduce the amount or reduce the impact of the fuel surcharge for this high school is that Bruce and his team determined that they could reduce a bus from, two buses out of Ashland, the one is out here.
Two, correct.
So that, that in itself chalked about two-thirds of the impact of this fuel surcharge for this school, okay? So.
And the other piece too, dear, is we've really taken advantage of the use of the vans. So I'll, I'll, I'll send those vans out as much as I can and get use out of that, and that pays for itself, I'm in charge.
They're not diesel, are they?
No, they're regular gas.
But just, just so you know, the number for this, for current school year, the fuel surcharge that's gonna be incurred is about $13,445. So on each one month of the 10 invoices for the busing contract, there'll be a $1344 fuel surcharge. So it's been a surprise to see that coming in the check and manifest for the circulates here. Okay? Anything else to add, pause?
Yeah.
Thanks. Nice to meet you.
Okay, weather days.
So weather days, I figured I'd talk about it beginning of October because sometimes I have to call it pretty soon. I just, I don't know. I, I no longer want to call remote days for weather days. It has been real hardship for teachers, for parents to figure out who's gonna watch kids. And it's just gonna be no school, or, and we'll make up the time if we need to, or we'll go to instructional hours if we need to. We haven't done remote learning in so long that to just switch at 5:00 in the morning to have the whole SAU voted, folks around here like our traditional snow days too. So I will be mindful of that, and I just think it's an easier message, and it's pretty transparent. You don't have to rush around and figure out who's gonna supervise who and what platforms you have to get on. Is it too icy to get online? I, I mean, it just, the variables are too much. I didn't, we had the option of remote last year. I didn't use it at all because of that reason. We just have some places that are so far rural that the weather does impact, impact internet access, so.
I see you weren't joking.
Yeah, right. Yeah, for real, yeah.
I thought you were joking, is it too icy?
Yeah, yeah, no, really, it has been, so.
It's a real thing.
It's a real thing.
Right, I live in a city.
So no more remote, so I just wanted to tell you that. And if, there will be no remote for any reason, unless the state tells me we have to go remote. You never know. But for right now, no remote for any sort of reason. That's all, just one update. My, the recognition proposal, you don't have to worry about. Peter already went through that, so I have nothing else under discussion items.
Okay. Privilege of the floor, second, Larry Gibson. Mona.
Thank you. I just had a question, and I, maybe I need to apologize. The proposal that I got in writing to the school board from last month to this month, now this one, over $1,000.
Yeah.
And what, what was the reasoning on that?
So I, I don't know what the reason was in there. They did charge us a significant amount more for installation. Installation and the shipping.
I think, yeah, because if we, yeah, if we, if we had done it before they installed it, it would have been much cheaper. They could have done it right now.
I know, but on the proposal that they gave me, if they had to come up and stop it, there was only gonna be an additional $800.
That was not the pricing they gave us.
Should I read it?
You can, yeah.
We hear a problem from Scoreboard Enterprises has confirmed the quote of $2,010 plus $2,000 for installation requires a crane drop. Total price to be $4,010, which includes install.
It's gone way up.
Yeah, that would be because of the crane.
The crane drop that they have to get, apparently.
And then there was also mentioned that you're getting a new scoreboard for the gymnasium and possibly, are you getting a new scoreboard there?
No. The only other school board would be.
We were talking about that at the elementary school, possibly. Sorry.
Same company?
Uh, we haven't decided, it's just been, it was just given on their calendar.
I thought somewhere in that contract, it was discussed that if they would come up and do that one, that they possibly could also do the baseball one at the same time, depending on when it was ordered and things like that.
That's, that's for possibly next, next year or just down the road.
I apologize for that, for that big increase for over one month of, you know, being delayed, so. All right, well, thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Great, Saff, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Board member concerns, anyone have any questions to fill?
Is there any update on the remote debate?
No changes at this point, so.
So what do we do, I mean, we need to have.
You, we, we can reach out to some people that might be interested. I mean, that's the piece, so we can, we're off, it's not a great story. Some different people that might be interested in doing it, yeah. Not at all.
How many times did the ad run? Since, what's the last, when did we post that in?
Is it posted electronically or on, on Twitter?
It was posted in Romney and here, so.
It's only till election, right?
It's, you fill it today, and then somebody has to write for the three-year term. But sometimes you can find someone just to see if they like it, maybe they wanna do the three-year term as well, so. Whenever we, we talk about, I think it was August that we, that we posted, it was August that we posted it, so it's posted since then. It's just been continuing to post, and it's out at all the Romney stocks as well. So if you think of anyone, let me know. We can obviously reach out, or if you know anyone that might be interested in doing it.
So it was posted in Plymouth and in Romney, but it didn't go out in the newspaper, the local newspaper?
It was in the newspaper, yes, yeah.
Okay. Any other board member concerns, was there? All right, and then we need to go into non-public?
Yeah.
Personnel, somebody want?
I'll make a motion, we go into non-public session for the purpose of personnel.
Second, Christine, do roll call, Paul.
Yes.
Barbara. Hello, Kristen, you guys, please.